The wrong person to have.
Come on in. Come on in.
We're on video.
That's where I saw him at. Yeah, he gave me a tour.
It's still getting shorter. We'll finish it up.
Man, I almost said something.
Yeah. I was sitting there thinking, I was like, oh, we're getting something.
I told Jamie we went to Costco when I was like, that's it, I'm buying a grinder.
Yeah, yeah. Even even if there's not pressure, if you're still making it, it holds all the way.
It's like.
I swear. Commercial ground coffee or something.
We just got in the habit of drinking.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the kids got me some good coffee for Christmas, like freshly brewed.
Makes a difference.
Well, good evening. I would like to call our Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting to order. If you all will please rise and join us for a prayer of the pledge. We're going to be led tonight by Montana, one of our officers.
Please bow your head. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, I think. Lord God Almighty, I just want to thank you for the opportunity that we all have here tonight, and the fact that we're a free nation and this wonderful community. Um, and our our city members filled with great wholesome people. Ask that you bless them and you guide them, guide their decisions, and they serve the greater good. And ask that you thicken their skin and toughen their hearts a bit, um, so that they can receive any criticism, um, with grace and know that they are just doing the best that they can. Uh, I pray for the safety of all those here tonight, safety for those in this community, and we would just worship and thank you for everything that we have. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Chairman Kurtson Kennedy.
Here.
Councilwoman Ockley.
Here.
Councilwoman Pettit. Councilman Blaze.
Here.
Thank you very much. I'll just note, uh, Councilwoman Pettit is at an excused absence. I asked her to attend the school master plan, uh, meeting tonight, so she's doing that as a liaison for us, so. Um, appreciate her willing to do that, so. First up, we have public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each citizen is limited to three minutes, and the council will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of city business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become an agenda item, excuse me, at a later date. Kay Pelkton.
I was at the, uh, planning and zoning meeting last week, and, uh, they went through a cause and effect kinda that they checked off, and I think the guy works at the bank. Is there a way to get that list?
Yeah.
It's in the minutes tonight? Okay, all right. I'll look and see. And so that's all in there and it's checked off. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You bet. Uh, so having another public comment, we'll move on to council forum. Mr. Proton.
I was able to attend the planning and zoning meeting to get some information on the two items. Well, there's multiple items, but two main topics tonight. Uh, and park board will convene this Thursday for the first meeting starting the new year. Other than that, pretty quiet.
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
Our hospital board meeting got canceled due to weather, and I just want to thank Carrie and her staff for the building down on Madison. I think that was just amazing how fast that went and how wonderful you and all your staff are. That's a pretty amazing job. Thank you.
Yeah, echo that. Um, nothing, uh, to report from from me either. Um, so, uh, moving on to the consent agenda, this will be our special session minutes from December nineteenth. Uh, along with the December twenty-four and January twenty-five appropriations.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda containing special session minutes on December nineteenth and January twenty-twenty-five appropriations.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Having no old business, we'll move into new business, starting with our favorite eight dot one oath and office of pending of a new officer.
Do you Tristan Anderson solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of police officer? That you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of the third class, and the ordinances of the city of Aurora, Missouri, and that you faithfully, will faithfully demean yourself while a police officer of the city of Aurora, Missouri, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Congratulations.
Just as a point of interest, uh, Officer Anderson here was one of, is the first police officer we hired while still in the police academy. Paid him while he was attending the academy, and then he came out on the road. Uh, we hadn't done that yet. That's kind of a thing that people are doing in recruiting now, but he had already been in the academy and we hired him and paid him for his time while he was in the academy. Now he's serving us, so we appreciate it and, uh, love having him. He's a good dude.
Yep. Thank you for being here. Appreciate you. Glad to have you. Moving on to eight dot two, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-ten, ACIS ARPA grant match.
Counsel, this is a budgeted item. Uh, the only thing I'd like to point out, and Kami was specific about it in the resolution, uh, there is a total purchase amount that you see in the ACIS, uh, quote, and our budgeted amount is for half of that, so we've got to pay that upfront to get those MDTs, uh, here, and then we'll, Wes will take care of submitting the request for reimbursement for fifty percent of that, so then we would match the budgeted amount.
In terms of, so I guess my question would be amounts and connectivity and installation and service plans, do we have all that?
I'm gonna let Wes speak to that. He's got planning for all those items.
Okay.
Uh, the quick answer is yes. Uh, those are things that we'll, um, we'll have to obtain, um, and I, uh, the way we will do that is probably in a phased way so that we don't impact the, uh, already existing vehicle maintenance equipment budget. The, uh, vehicles that you're gonna, um, vote on later would be already equipped with them when we got them. The existing patrol vehicles would have to have a mounting, uh, hardware put in there for the, uh, MDTs, and then yes, we'll have to look at a, uh, uh, we'll have to look at a, uh, data plan, which, um, is, uh, if if we use Verizon, which is the local, that's what the sheriff's department uses for their MDTs, that's what Monet uses for their MDTs, it's what Republic uses. Um, it's, uh, averages about thirty-five to forty bucks per unit, uh, per month, so, um, I'm guessing somewhere in the neighborhood of s- seven to eight hundred dollar a month, um, data plan bill. So, um, in the conversations with previous, uh, city manager, all of that, according to him, was, uh, wrapped up in the money that we saved with, uh, reduction of staff and then also with the, uh, existing PFF and all of that stuff, so some of those conversations, um, I guess came from old to new and so, but I will have all of that on paper, um, whenever we get the units in and all of that stuff, but yes, it would be a data plan and a mounting package, but the rest of it, like the RMS and all of that stuff, that's all going to be cost-free.
Because that was the one where we didn't have to pay additional license.
Yep. So that, uh, system is supposed to launch mid-February, early March, um, and so once that launches and that's all good, that's a web-based program, we won't have to do any software installation or servers or anything local, it's all cloud-based. And so there will be nothing actually installed on those MDTs for that, and that'll also be the interface for the mules, uh, uh, access to stolen and and wanted and and driver's licenses and stuff, that'll all be built into that RMS. But that's no cost.
Okay. Any other questions?
None further from me.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-ten for ACIS and ARPA grant match.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to eight dot three, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eleven, cemetery and street department mower purchases.
Counsel, this is also a budgeted item, and Brad is here tonight. Uh, Jason Gordon was unable to be here to not do some, uh, family illness, uh, but he's gonna echo what Brad has to present to you because they've agreed on the same mower, so I'll let Brad come up and speak to the specifics on that.
So I went through the bid process, got the three, actually got four bids, um, with the money allowed. Scag, grasshopper, um, the big commercial names, not feasible for the money allowed. We used Bad Boy all year last year, most of the, you know, most of the year last year. Had great luck with it. Um, the difference in the pumps, the big commercial units have a bigger pump in them. Um, we service them two or three times a year. Uh, they, if we get into the trading program or the the selling program, you know, they're gonna be great mowers for three or four years. If we want to go with the big commercial units, um, they're gonna last a little bit longer, but they're twice the price. And so we had such good luck with the Bad Boys. I got a couple Bad Boy, um, bids on them. I got a, uh, Red Max bid. Scag was way high. Um, I got a grasshopper big from Mount Vernon, but, um, it came back way high. So, um, Bad Boy came in the, uh, the best price, and it's the exact same mower that we used all last year, so, um, had good luck with it. Hopefully we have good luck with it again, if if that's what we go with.
You're the one that has to use it, not me. So if you're happy with it, I'm happy with it. I don't have any other questions than that. Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eleven, cemetery and street department mower purchases.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Eight dot four, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-twelve, purchase of patrol cars. Chief has been given the look.
Um, so yes, we, uh, have put in for some twenty twenty-five Cadillac Escalades for patrol vehicles. Uh, no, I'm sorry, I'm well done. Uh, no, uh, the, uh, the most affordable, uh, police vehicle on the market right now is the Dodge Durango. Um, you can get those in two styles, V-sixes and V-eights. Um, I don't need a Hemi V-eight running around the city of Aurora, so, um, we have priced out a lease, uh, option for some patrol vehicles through a company called ESU Pursuits. Um, they are a company that basically obtains patrol vehicles from the factory, brings them in, sells them to people using a lease, uh, option, five or six-year option, and the vehicles come to you equipped with all the light sirens, uh, all of the stuff that you need, uh, with the exception of radios that you'll install yourself, but the rest of it cages, um, and all of that stuff already on them, and then they guarantee that stuff for a certain period of time. And, uh, it's like I say, it's a lease, uh, program. Uh, I believe six percent sounds right on the paperwork. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but it's six percent sa- sounds like what it ended up being. Um, yeah, the, um, um, total, originally I had asked for, um, four, then last year during the budget session, it went up to five, and then somehow or another it got to six. Um, and so I had a conversation with Carrie and I was like, you know, really, four right now would be fine, and then we would, uh, if we like it, this is the thing, is it's kind of an ex- experimental thing. If you like it and we like the way it works and we like the lease, great. Um, if not, then, uh, you know, we're not too far into it, um, with too many vehicles, if that makes sense. So, um, the, um, the fleet is aging. We've got several vehicles with a hundred and fifty-plus thousand miles on it, and so this would just be to, uh, start to replace some of those that are, that are, uh, aging out, so. I'm sure you have questions about the lease thing, and if I, I've, I've done a lot of research on this and I can tell you, I, you know, to say I had absolutely no concerns about it at all would be wrong. I, I do, I, you know, buying something on on interest always makes me nervous when it's a police tool, because you can wear a tool out pretty quick and then you're stuck still in a lease and all of that, so it's something to definitely consider and think about, just like I said in our budget sessions, but, um, I think that, uh, especially with like the CID, uh, vehicle and all of that, the, the, the lease will be up long before we mile them out. And so, um, should we not have any kind of weird crashes or anything like that, then, um, they should last through the term of the lease. And then at the end of the lease, uh, it's not one of those leases where there's a bubble payment and all of that stuff, so at the end of the lease, the vehicle's yours. Um, and, uh, you own it, you can either trade it back in on a new lease or keep it or do whatever you want with it, but it is your vehicle at the end of the lease, and there's no, there's no, uh, end of the, end of the lease, uh, chunk payments or what we used to call in the car business bubble payments, so, um, it's what a lot of agencies are doing. This particular company is building a brick and mortar in Joplin because they're having so much business, um, down in this area, and so right now they're based out of, uh, up by, uh, uh, Alatha, Kansas, but he's, uh, uh, ex- expanding that business down to, uh, Joplin to service more of the area down here, so.
What was the amount we originally approved in the budget?
Forty-seven thousand.
Okay.
So that was based on, this is a formal proposal document that you see in your agenda tonight, so prior to this, we had an email where staff had spoken with ESU Pursuits to get just some base amounts, um, and that email indicated forty-six, six, or something like that, so I rounded up to forty-seven for that budgetary purpose. I discussed that with Wes and asked him what the difference was there because we are higher when we got this formal proposal document, and he indicated, uh, just an increase in in the cars in general. Primarily, these would have the mounts for the MDTs, mounts for, uh, racks for rifles, correct?
Rifle racks, yeah.
And then those were additional costs that he and John had discussed after we got some of those initial numbers, so that's the primary reason for the increase.
So I, I'll offer you an apology about this budgeting. I applied for this grant, this ARPA grant for the MDTs in two thousand twenty-two. Um, you signed off on it. The ARPA was not funded until all of a sudden, um, in November, early December of of this last year. And so that gives me until twenty twenty-six to spend the ARPA funds, and so the MDT stuff had to be added to the patrol vehicle cost unexpectedly. I didn't know that we were going to get that ARPA grant funded when we did, because I'd applied for it so long ago, um, that they finally approved it, and so some of this, some of this, like with the cost of the monthly and all of that, that was stuff I was planning on dealing with back in two thousand twenty-two, but it just hit me, um, that they funded the grant and approved it and told me, okay, now you have basically twelve months to spend the money, so some of this may seem like I'm coming all of a sudden with it, but I just didn't know that that grant was gonna get funded when it got funded, so my apologies on that.
Thanks for the explanation. Okay. Any other questions, counsel?
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-twelve for the purchase of a patrol car.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to eight dot five, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-thirteen, discounts and partnerships for the Aurora Recreation Center. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, counsel. How y'all doing tonight?
Good.
All right, so per our discussion, um, these seven items listed in front of you or that are listed on exhibit A, um, some changes that were made based on our discussion. Uh, the one I want to bring up that was not on that discussion previously was a discount for early mer- early membership purchase. I think it would be beneficial to us to offer a discount for people who purchase a membership in full, so this would be the annual membership prior to the facility opening, and then we would just extend that membership through their, through a, in a year from the start date of the open date of the facility, so their membership would not start when they bought it normally as it would. Um, for this example, it would just start when the facility opens. Uh, other than that, changes that were made, um, for the city use of the recreation center, um, as we talked about in the last discussion, uh, doing that by special living application only for your approval. Uh, and then we would waive all of the, uh, rental fees and, uh, the deposit as well. For the corporate partnerships, uh, Ms. Dawn had ta- talked about a three- or six-month option, um, kind of decreases the risk incurred by the business. Um, I want to be clear that we do not have a three- or a six-month product, but we do have a way that we could do that, so I have that listed on there as a six-month, uh, paying full option, so that would be the monthly rate multiplied by six, and then we would take that discounted rate, that either the fifteen or the twenty percent off of that, that total. So it wouldn't be the annual rate cut in half, if that makes sense to everybody. And then for the affiliate program, after discussing with Carrie, uh, we thought that there should be a little bit of buy-in, um, from the company in order to get a discount, so that's why, that purchase of interior digital marketing at six hundred dollars a year, um, so what that would do is probably give them the opportunity to become an affiliate with us, a little bit of a buy-in from the company, and then they would be able to get the smaller discount for their employees based on the number of employees. Any questions or anything I can help with based on that list?
Question on the early membership purchase, so is that a one-time only at the beginning when open, so then when it comes time of renewal, it's full price?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You did fantastic.
Counsel, the only thing I'd like to add real quick, uh, one thing that we did take off of there, uh, or removed from current conversation was a, a consideration for a discount for families that are qualified for free notice lunches at the school. So I had a conversation with Dr. Yocum, and there's some legalities there in terms of how he could verify that, so we've removed that from this for now, but we do intend to work through that either alongside our after-school program or once we figure out exactly how we can obtain that information, uh, without any kind of public issue there. So, um, we'll still be looking at that in the future, but right now that has been removed.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-thirteen, discounts and partnerships for the Aurora Rec Center.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to eight dot six, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-fourteen, cemetery truck purchase.
I'm gonna have Brad come back up for this one, um, but just to kind of explain what's in front of you, in the past, I'll use an example of the building inspector's pickup. We decided to go with something slightly used to save kind of from a budgetary standpoint, but also, uh, due to lack of being able to get brand-new vehicles at that time that, uh, we're on the state bid and that kind of thing. Brad and I have had conversations about this, and he'd like to do similar, um, and he's been doing some shopping, but I wanted to make sure that this came before you in resolution style, and I had a conversation with Nate about that. So basically what this is, is just a request for Brad and I to work together to purchase a vehicle up to that budgeted amount that may be fifty thousand miles or less, something like that. So we're not looking to go incredibly used, we're looking to go gently used, but, uh, from a budgetary standpoint, he believes, again, better utilize that money, uh, if we don't go with something brand-new and then, um, just handle it like we did shopping for Aaron, so I'll let him kind of tell you what he's looking to purchase.
And we, and we budgeted thirty for this, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm just looking, just looking for a truck.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I don't really care what it is, just something that's reliable.
Yeah.
That's it.
So I guess I would just, uh, do you have a place that you're considering? I guess I would just be cautious of any kind of, um, you know, buying from a buddy, that kind of, that kind of thing, right? Like, um, just be mindful of of where you're getting it.
Yeah, I mean.
Who it's from and all that.
I was thinking a dealership.
Okay.
You know, um, something that's been through the checkpoints, you know.
Perfect.
But that's what I was thinking.
Okay. All right. That's the only thing I wanted to make sure we're being transparent with. Okay. Well, I will make a motion that we approve, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-fourteen, cemetery truck purchase.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Item number eight dot seven, special use permit, cat lounge.
Counsel, this request comes by formal application from Alex and Brad Warren, owners of the property at one oh-three South Madison. This was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their most recent meeting, and, uh, you should have in your agenda tonight, uh, the minutes from that Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, uh, as well as my staff report, but to kind of give you an overview, um, so the reason why this has come before you as a special use permit for consideration uh, is because of a non-conforming or conditional use in the zoning district, so why we arrived at that need and requested that they apply in such a manner is because the topic property is currently zoned C-two general business district. And in our C-two district, in that zone in our code, it outlines that if a speci- if the use that's requested is not specifically listed in our code, it can be approved by special consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council, um, as long as it ensures conformity to the intent of the chapter. And additionally, um, it can have stipulations attached to an approval, so, uh, operations that are listed in our C-two zoning right now that are somewhat similar or could be considered such are an animal hospital or a veterinary clinic. Uh, but we just believe that to be different enough that this should come for special consideration. Uh, the current land use is actually a mixed use with commercial and residential combined. Uh, the property owners have indicated some intent to operate multiple short-term rental rooms within the structure in the future, possibly, uh, but there's no formal application or anything in front of us for that at this time. Our city code section two-ten dot one-six-oh addresses limitation on number of cats or dogs kept as pets, but in that code, which is attached in your agenda, it only refers to residential zoning districts, so there again, we just felt the need to have some special consideration and to go before both PNZ and the council. Uh, my research brought me to, uh, determining that the Missouri Department of Agriculture Animal Care Facilities Act, or A- ACFA program, regulates commercial activities involving dogs and cats, and it requires licensing of certain facilities. So my recommendation is that, and I recommended this to the PNZ commission as well, um, if you were to look at approval, my recommendation is some stipulations and some requirements on that permit approval, uh, based on those guidelines. They are looking to, and the property owner's here tonight, so I'll let them do some explanation of their actual intended day-to-day operation of it, uh, but they are loo- looking to partner with Stray Animals Matter, and they would be, I believe, temporarily boarding the cats for them to be rehomed, for them to find their forever homes. Um, so with that being the case, they would qualify for that licensing requirement, uh, which would either be a license of their own, or they might have an opportunity to be an extension of stray animal matters licensing. Um, that we would need to confirm exact requirements on that from the state, uh, but we have checked and stray animal matters, um, stray animals matter, they are licensed and they are compliant with the state. So the Pe- Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval, and their stipulations that they put on it are a max number of twenty cats at any time within the facility, following the ACFA guidelines, as I've referred to, and then annual inspections by city, city staff. So we do animal, annual commercial building inspections anyway, uh, through the fire department. This could be a partnership between community development, um, to make sure that when those commercial inspections are done, this one's done either at the same time or is checked off annually in some other fashion. So that's our recommendation in terms of that. Uh, public hearing notices were mailed to all property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet. We had one formal response by letter from the owner of One West, and he is in support. We received a letter from Engage Church with some questions about the use. Once those were answered, they not, they did not. Once those were answered, they not, they did not show any opposition or state any after they received the answers. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer. If not, I will yield to the property owners.
No, I think I do.
Actually, I do. Sorry, I heard that backwards, I'm sorry. So I saw, I was actually able to attend, so it was great to get the information and solve some questions. The only one I had outlining is there's just a touch of ambiguity around the A-C-F-A guidelines. Are we, are we stating that we are going to patrol that or, because there are not going to be an A-C-F-A facility, so there's no outlying entity, I guess, that's going to come in and do that, so are we doing that, or how is that being?
If they are boarding the cats for someone else, they do actually qualify to be under those A-C-F-A guidelines. So we wouldn't have the ability to patrol their guidelines, the state would do that.
That's what I'm getting at, so there's somebody at the state that's going to be overview, okay.
Yes, and there's requirements that they have annual veterinary visits and checks on the animals and, and things like that in there as well. So the state would monitor that. I'm just asking for an extra stipulation for city annual inspection so that we can ensure proper keeping of the facility and, and make sure that they can provide to us proof that they are in compliance with the state.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Alex, and we are the owners of the old Bootleggers Building. I'm sure you guys have plenty of questions, so our future vision is that we will turn Aurora into something that feels kind of like a Eureka Springs where people want to come from outside of the area and spend money and infuse our town. We, that's our town now because we moved here, with outside funds and more tax money, and we stop sending tax money to Branson and Springfield, Joplin, and get to see more of it, so we don't have to raise our taxes to ten percent. That would be our end goal. Eventually, we do want to buy another building downtown and move the cat lounge somewhere downtown where it would be more accessible to the handicapped people and be more of a benefit to the mental and social aspects of the community that are underserved and underdeveloped. We also want to give more to the children that are growing up here in Aurora, as we have an eight-year-old son, and in the next three weeks, we'll be adopting a little girl. So we want there to be more family value, more community value, more want for our children who grow up here to stay here, and that is our end goal. After we do move the cat lounge, we do have intentions of turning the upstairs into a bed and breakfast that plays off of the restaurant that we'll restore downtown and the retail shop and the saunas that we have going in. And we want to make it a destination for people. It's beautiful, especially after the sun goes down and the stars come out, you don't see that in the city. So are there any questions that I could answer?
One question that came at me, maybe more for Carrie than, than for you, would be, is, is this applied to the location or to the business? So if they do, in fact, you know, three months from now buy another building, you know, down the street, do we redo this for that new location?
Yeah, unless there were a code change, we would address it the same way with a different property.
Okay, great, okay, that, that checks what I, what I was concerned about. So no, thank you for investing in our community.
Absolutely.
Wish you guys the best of luck.
Thank you for having faith that I'll move that fast.
Any other questions?
I have none.
No?
Thank you.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve, which one are we on here?
Seven.
Special use permit, eight dot seven, cat lounge.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to eight dot eight, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three thirty-seven, amending section four hundred dot one-thirty, proposed amendment to yard setbacks and city code. Question, Carrie, so I think eight dot eight, eight dot nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are relatively all related, and maybe this is a late question. Do we need to go through each one of these individually and, or can we kind of combine them?
You gotta do them separately.
Okay.
I mean, she can explain all of them at once.
Yeah, so my intent was, I had Kami only attach minutes and supporting documents to this first ordinance that's related to this, just to cut down on that agenda a little bit. I'm gonna explain the first one, and it will inadvertently explain the remainder. So my goal is just to give you a brief explanation that kind of ties it all together, and then that way you can just move through the additional ordinances unless you see any concerns in a specific zoning district. So what this comes from is Planning and Zoning Commission has had some conversations. This actually started with the Board of Zoning Adjustment, so we've had a few requests go in front of the Board of Zoning Adjustment for side yard setbacks. And they had the conversation, which P and Z has also had in recent years, that if we're approving something repeatedly, maybe it's time for consideration of a code change. So that's exactly what's before you tonight. So Planning and Zoning has considered this. Building Inspector Gates and I worked on this together based on conversations with developers, as well as making some drawings and some measurements on some of our existing lots to determine what we'd like to recommend. And what the Planning and Zoning Commission is bringing to you is consideration of amending the side yard setbacks to eight foot, they're currently ten foot. And this would amend them to eight foot for side yard setbacks. And then additionally, you'll see in each of these zoning districts, we've made an addition of a sentence that just states setbacks shall be measured from the nearest point on the foundation wall to the property line. We didn't, we didn't, well, currently, we don't have anything in our code that specifically states where that measurement comes from. So there's been some discrepancy or some conversation with developers from time to time about whether you measure, if you count the eve or you don't, is that in your setback, is it not? And so we believe that it should come from that foundation wall that's typical for most communities around us. So Aaron and I wanted to make sure that we have that in there as well for moving forward. So we're making this change throughout, other than in our C-two, I'm sorry. We'd be looking at amending to eight foot except twelve foot when a business is adjacent to any residential district or structure. So we want to make sure that we allow that buffering in that space between residential and commercial. So that's what, happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? I, I don't have any, I had all mine prior.
Right.
Okay, with that, I will make a motion that we approve first reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three thirty-seven.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Do you want to do amending section?
Amending section, yes, I do, amending section four hundred dot one-thirty.
I'm second half.
Please vote.
Motion passed.
Sorry.
Thank you, Dawn. Eight dot nine, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three thirty-eight, amending section four hundred dot one-fifty.
Make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five thirty-three thirty-eight, amending section four hundred dot one-fif, one, fifty.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
I got you all messed up, didn't I?
Eight dot ten, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three thirty-nine, amending section four hundred dot one-eighty.
Second. I'll make a motion, we accept the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three thirty-nine, amending section four hundred point one-eight-zero.
Second.
Motion and second, vote please.
Motion passed.
Eight dot eleven, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three forty, amending section four hundred dot one-ninety.
Make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three forty, amending section four hundred dot one-nine-zero.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Eight dot twelve, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three forty-one, amending section four hundred dot two-hundred.
Make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three forty-one, amending section four hundred dot two-hundred.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote. Eight dot thirteen, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three forty-two, amending section four hundred dot two-ten.
Make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three forty-two, amending section four hundred dot two-ten.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you all. Next up, staff reports. Carrie, what you got?
I'm gonna try to not be long-winded, but I do have a few things here that I'd like to point out and just visit with the council about. So as we go down through the city manager report, the police department, I wanted to bring attention to a public dedication of the John Chambers Memorial, which would be held on January twenty-first at the police and fire facility. So our parks department worked to create that brick and mortar memorial there, and there's a bench out there. They've done a great job, and Wes wants to take the opportunity to do a formal dedication of that. This will be in conjunction with the Rotary Club's regular meeting on next Tuesday, the twenty-first. And Wes is going to be providing chili as a lunch meal, I believe, there for Rotary at noon, and then the dedication to follow at twelve-thirty. So we would love for any and all council members that can to join us there for that dedication. Fire department, so we talked previously about, we applied for a grant through SimCog. SimCog actually wrote the application for the grant funding for us for writing of a new city emergency response or emergency operations plan. We were awarded that grant, and now we've had the kickoff meeting for beginning that process. And so Wes and Greg and I met with Cloetta, I don't think that's how they pronounce it, so I apologize publicly if I'm saying their name wrong. But that's the firm that will be writing the plan. One thing I'd like to point out there is they are going to be offering some training at no additional cost to the city for some incident command training, ICS four oh two, which is really for senior officials. So executives elected and appointed officials, city managers, agency administrators, et cetera. We're going to take them up on that offer and have that training here at City Hall. I'm going to make it mandatory for all of the management team, department heads, to take that training, and we would love to extend that invitation to the council. So we don't have a date for that yet, we're going to be working on some calendar stuff in the next few days on that. But just wanted you to know that we're going to take them up on that opportunity, and we'd love for you to be a part if you'd like. Snow removal and road condition management, I just want to take a second to say thank you. Our street department, and I don't know if everybody realizes it, our cemetery department, our parks department, they all come out. They band together, they work as a team, and guys that wouldn't have to be out there working, we hours of the night are joining the street department, and they're helping get that done. So I just want to say thank you to all of them publicly. We had a bigger snow than we've had in a long time in Aurora, and they did a great job getting us back to where everybody could function safely as quickly as possible. In addition to that, our police department has been fantastic about staying in contact with me, as well as our fire department. I live three miles north of town, and those guys are answering their phones at five-thirty a.m. to help me understand what the city limits is like, what the roads are like, because we have officers and firefighters that are out there, and they don't have a choice either. So I just want to say thank you to all of them, and I want the council to know the teamwork that's being put into these situations is extremely impressive, and I'm very grateful. Rec Center, I just want to point out the youth basketball league, we have two hundred and twenty-six paid participants, twenty-nine teams. That's more than double what we had last year. So Anthony and Jeremy are doing a fantastic job getting that programming going for the first time under their helm. And we have four hundred and eleven customer profiles set up in the DaySmart system. So that's increased considerably since your last email update you received from me. I think their marketing and their social media posts are doing a good job of getting that information out there. If you move into wastewater, DNR came and did a site inspection the end of December, and we're awaiting the final report, but the inspector indicated no notable concerns. I'd just like to point out to the council, this is the first DNR site inspection we've had since Lance took over as superintendent. And as of right now, they're saying that there's no notable concerns. When we get that formal report, we'll share it with the council. But I just want to commend Lance for how good he's doing and his staff out there with the wastewater facility. Admin and finance, Councilwoman Pettit had turned in her laptop, her council issued, city issued laptop, because she wasn't utilizing it. We're having that reset and some repairs made to it, and we're going to go ahead and issue that to the city treasurer on, we wish we would have had it last week so that she didn't need to try to come in from where she lives. So we've talked about laptops possibly replacing desktop computers in the budget conversation that we had. We have gotten some quotes from ACES, we're moving in that direction. But I want to go ahead and issue this one to Jesse so that now, until we get that in place, she has one she can utilize from home if needed. So just want you to know that council laptop is going to be assigned to her.
Fantastic.
Kami, as you guys know from budgetary conversations, is attending the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Conference, which is a costly conference compared to some of our others. But she took it upon herself to apply for a scholarship and found out today that she's been awarded that. Yeah. So that's going to cover over half the cost of her registration and hotel room on her total cost of that. So excited for her, I believe that there was only one, right, chosen for that? So she did a great job getting that written and obtaining that scholarship. Current board openings, we still have a need for some people to fill some seats. You'll see that Kami has been posting those today on social media and the city website, and she has prepared a notice for the newspaper. I'm in really, really major need of someone on the Board of Zoning Adjustments right now. So if you guys know anybody, please help us, bring people that would, maybe would be willing to sit on that boza board, that'd be great.
And is that airport board a in-town individual, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and that, I might add, is a recent resignation, that's why we do have an opening on the airport board right now. We just received that resignation last week. I believe just scheduling conflicts, he indicated that he's going to miss three, and he just felt like it was best for him to step down, so that's why we have an opening there. Community development, couple of things here. Board of Zoning Adjustment considered a variance for the installation of a small propane tank to power a generator at a property within the city limits last week. And I just want to point out, so our code does not allow for propane tanks, but I want the council to be aware of this situation and, and what took place and why. We've actually found out, and we did not know this previously, but we learned that there is no natural gas availability to this street within this neighborhood. It's one of the only areas within the town that the natural gas pipeline does not run to. So, but for that, this property owner would be able to utilize natural gas for powering his generator. The Board of Zoning Adjustments did approve that, but we've put stipulations on it for annual inspections and reports to be provided to the fire department and a minimal size, so residential size can be up to five hundred gallon. This one will be about two hundred and sixty to three hundred and thirty gallon. So small tank, but we put stipulations on it, and that was approved, so I just want you to be aware. Missouri State University, I mentioned to you all previously some months ago that we were working with them in hopes that their planning students might choose Aurora for a semester to complete a downtown visioning plan, and they did choose Aurora to complete that visioning plan. They're going to be here on Saturday, January twenty-fifth, for a field trip to kick off the project. It looks like they're going to be here about nine-thirty that morning to start. If anybody would like to join me, I'll be here that Saturday to walk them through our downtown and give them some feedback about what we hope to see. This will be in conjunction with the Aurora Downtown Project, and there will be a community input and public meeting just a few weeks after that field trip, but they'll be coming to Get Oriented on January twenty-fifth. We have a meeting scheduled with Ozark Fiber for tomorrow to discuss fiber installation to city properties, primarily city parks. So this was a conversation that came up previously about if we wanted fiber to all city properties while Ozark Fiber's doing their standard initial installation, it would be no cost to the city, because some of our facilities, we didn't feel like needed it at the time, or already had some other options, they were told no. But I think that we should revisit that. So they are willing to put the boxes or pods or anything we may need at any location based on topography in for us at no cost now. We don't have to utilize their service, but if in the future we so choose, then it's there. And I believe that this is a good opportunity for us to look at installation of security cameras at our city properties, primarily our parks, we've talked about that. So we're going to be meeting with them tomorrow in person to make sure we can identify all of those properties and see if we can get that installation done while they're still here.
Yeah, I can't think of a good reason not to do that. More the better options, I mean, I would even include maybe even like our Lions Club building, right? Like anywhere we could get a connection at cost, let's do it.
Yeah, I agree. So we're revisiting that with them tomorrow, and we'll move forward trying to get that all taken care of while they're here. I think that's everything on the city manager's report. If you move into the economic development report, the only thing I'd like to point out is at one-twenty-one West Pleasant, construction continues there with sheet rock and painting. That contract is at, it's actually at expiration right now. And we had in that contract that if the contractor wasn't done within a twelve-month period, we could consider an extension. I'll be bringing that before the council on January twenty-eighth for consideration to extend that contract. He really, he's done a lot there to sheet rock and painting, they're almost done. He just didn't quite get it done in the twelve-month period. So I just wanted you to know that that contract is up, in case any of you were aware of that, we'll be addressing that January twenty-eighth, and I'll be asking you to consider an extension.
And what was the address?
One-twenty-one West Pleasant. One twenty-one West Pleasant. So that's the city-owned property that we did an agreement for rehabilitation in exchange for the deed.
Yeah.
And they're just not quite finished yet, so.
Okay.
I think that's all I have, happy to answer any questions you have for me. Sorry, I was kind of long-winded there.
That's perfect. I love your transparency, I love all the information, I love your calls that you get and emails.
Thank you.
You're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Do we have any, regarding the Rec Center, I know we've made a lot of purchases, there's a lot of things in the air, do we have any brief updates on furniture and equipment, and how that's going so far?
Yeah, so you have a sizable paragraph that's highlighted there on page one of that, but to give you some highlights, our biggest negative that we have right now is the furniture. So, we do have a few pieces of the furniture that they're not looking at having here and installed until end of February or beginning of March. That is not what we were hoping. So I responded back to the furniture representative and asked her, could we do all of the furniture that comes in initially, and then what pieces would be missing? Can we get functional and open the facility while we're waiting on a conference table or something? But unfortunately, they're indicating that it would need to be a one-time delivery and installation, or some of those fees that we have included in that for shipping and installation would be double, and that was about a twelve thousand dollar hit. So, unfortunately, we're looking at waiting on furniture, and we're probably in early March open now.
Okay.
Anthony and I are not super happy about that, but we're doing the best we can with it. The exercise equipment is actually on target, and I believe I have that in here too. It is looking at delivery and installation by February fifteenth, and that would be complete installation, to where all the exercise equipment is ready to go. We've had some issues with the walking trail on the southeast corner, it's just really wet up in there in that one area, we knew that when we purchased the property, but we've got some unsuitable soils there that continue to be a challenge. The contractor is now working to install a French drain system to transfer water from that area to the stormwater detention pond, and then we're not going to be able to get that paving completed right there in that section until spring. There's just no way, until we get that unsuitable soil dealt with and the ground dried up a little bit. So, they'll be fencing off that portion of the walking trail until we get that completed on the paving. The other areas will be usable, but that side just won't, until we get to spring there. Everything else is kind of written out in there. Elevator is scheduled for testing January twenty-third, and then everything else seems to be moving along really well. We had a meeting with the landscaping design company last week after the regularly scheduled owner-architect-contractor meeting, and they've shown us some preliminary ideas. I need to give the parks staff some credit for that, too. They went through the lists of trees and bushes and flowers that were being recommended with a fine-tooth comb. Logan worked with Travis and the Parks Department, and actually put together a slideshow presentation, or a slide presentation that addressed each thing they wanted us to plant, and he said, nope, this doesn't grow well here, nope, we planted this two years ago and it died, we can't do that. So they've really gone through those really well, and said this doesn't work in Southwest, in Aurora, or Southwest Missouri, whatever applied, and have given some really good indication of what they don't think will work, and what they would recommend. With that being the case, we're going to be meeting with them again to follow up on some of those things they're putting in or taking out, and then you should see the design for landscaping come before you on January twenty-eighth, I hope.
Okay.
So that we can move forward with that.
Speaking of the park board, you reminded me of something I wanted to mention, you know, we were pretty busy when Rebecca came and spoke to all of us regarding the Monarch stuff, and kind of having some places in town to have some of that, utilize some space for that. I think there was a deadline of something in December for a pledge, you know, we missed that, but I wanted to make sure it was okay with council that we just let her work with the park board and Travis to find some spaces locally to kind of, you know, start that, and we can look at something more formal next year, but to allow her to work on that project with that group.
My, my plan at the park board meeting and that discussion was to suggest potentially developing kind of a subcommittee in the park board that deals with that, so that way we, as a city, have some structure around what happens if that committee dissolves. These things are passion projects, sometimes people move, or family situations change, they can't keep up with it, I want to make sure we have some, to your point, proceed with it, but make sure they have some guidelines around what can we, because we had a similar question like this, it's been a couple of years ago, I think, where somebody wanted to do some of this type of thing with the empty lots in town, and that went a couple meetings, and then it kind of dissolved, and it disappeared a little bit. So I want to make sure if we do it, they have some plan around who's controlling it, and if that ever dissolves, the city has clear instructions that, you know, we take back over the property, and here's how we're going to handle it, kind of thing. So that was my only concern, I plan on bringing that up Thursday.
I like that idea, everybody.
That was discussed very briefly at the management meeting this morning as well, and Travis asked around the table, do any of you have any thoughts on, you know, city-owned property of where something like this would work? So I know he's been working on that, researching it some, and he started some conversations this morning. So I know on his end, he's doing some consideration as well.
Awesome, okay. If no one has anything else, I will make a motion adjourned, I appreciate everybody's attending and attendance. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
Yeah, I was just thinking about. Catch up next time. Because they have to be computerized, so they have a certain hour and stuff, but it's magnetic locked at a certain time, and then it's even set up, I know that the one they installed at Carthage, it had an app, and so like the park director could be like, oh, there's an evening event that night, they could just go in and go, okay, don't lock until ten o'clock, and then they wouldn't lock until ten, or they unlock them earlier in the morning, or something like that, you know?